Regular meeting number 15 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
The allegiance certified by the United States of America, due republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, every being and justice for all.
Now let us pray. Almighty and ever-living God, the members of Columbus City Council come together tonight after a brief but refreshing break to take up once more the legislation affecting the citizens of our great city. As the season of spring makes its tentative debut these days, may it be for us a sign of better days to come for ourselves and the citizens of our city. We're grateful for the vigorous and competent leadership of the members of this council and the administration of our city and all that they have provided us. We continue to pray that they will keep the common good of all constantly before their eyes while keeping in mind always the needs of the poor, the marginalized, the forgotten, the powerless, and the very young who tend to suffer the most because they lack a voice to speak for them. May the members of this council be their advocates and champions so that the promises of the Constitution of our nation and state will assure, not only in promise, but in fact, that all citizens are afforded life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness in such a way that they too can make their contribution to the common good. In all things, Lord, we look to you for inspiration and guidance. We place our needs and the needs of our brothers and sisters before you, confident that you will hear and answer our prayer. Amen.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
So move.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions or announcements from members of council? Councilmember Craig.
Thank you very much, President Ginter. Tonight, I'd like to honor Ms. Meslin A. Perez Fernandez. Ms. Fernandez, if you will begin to approach the podium, and your guest. I had the privilege, the honor, of serving on a selection committee at the Defense, Construction, Supply Center Women of the Year, a Woman of the Year for 2013, and Ms. Perez Fernandez was this year's recipient of this prestigious award. She currently serves as the acquisition specialist and basic contract administrator for the Defense Logistics Agency Land and Maritime Strategic Acquisition Programs Director. Meslin is passionately active in federal community programs and promotes professional development. She is highly involved with the Hispanic Employment Program, better known as HEP. She often takes lead roles for HEP-sponsored events and has been recognized multiple times. She brought back an idea from the 2012 League of the United Latin American Citizens Conference Federal Training Institute and organized an HEP flash mentoring event. Flash mentoring is a one-time mentoring session where participants have the opportunity to walk, opportunity to talk with multiple mentors. Over 30 associates benefited from the session and met with six mentors during a 60-minute session. Meslin was instrumental to the success of HEP and morale, welfare, and recreation-sponsored 2012 Professional Enhancement Series. She obtained two presenters for the series as well as handled responsibilities for program registration. She volunteers as a public affairs liaison for the EEO, HEP, and EEO office and published 15 articles in the Columbus Federal Voice, which were also highlighted on the DLA Today and Tomorrow website. She was a key worker for the 2012 Combined Federal Campaign and Operation Feed. She represented Central Michigan University in the Ohio Hispanic Business Summit by the Ohio Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. During the summit, she took the opportunity to provide guidance to Latina women with children interested in pursuing a degree. She contributes articles focusing on children's issues, particularly sexual abuse, to the publication. A Puerto Rican newspaper promoting awareness of these critical issues and offering alternatives for victims and their families. Recently, she served as a judge for the Canal Winchester Middle School Science Fair and acted as a translator for a parent-teacher conference at Broadley Elementary School. Meslin just graduated from the DLA Land and Maritime Level Two Mentoring Program and previously completed a Jewish doctorate degree and subsequently earned a certificate in mediation from Sacred Heart University, Puerto Rico. And so tonight, certainly, we want to honor her and her accomplishments. And Ms. Perez Fernandez, would you please have comments, provide comments for us this evening?
Yeah, I'm truly happy with this recognition, and I feel so blessed and very excited to be here at the Columbus City Council. As I mentioned before, and as part of the Women History Celebration, we need to remember all the important contributions of remarkable women who turned down the barriers of prejudice. Women such as Rosa Parks, Hari Toomey, Helen Keller, Mother Teresa, and Hillary Clinton were my inspiration to make a difference at the Defense Logistics Agency Land and Maritime Columbus. During my career in the public service, I had the opportunity to publish more than 32 articles in the Columbus Federal Voice and in other newspapers, especially in Puerto Rico, about sexual children abuse. In these articles, I have a lot related with diversity, with inclusion. And there is something else I would like to say, and as Martin Luther King says, you know, in the past, I have a dream, and my dream is to see minorities across all labor positions of my organization and across the public service. I'm very proud to be part of the DLA, the Defense Logistics Agency, and to be one of the employees that support the warfighter. And really, I'm very happy about being a contract specialist there, too. I'm not in part of the public service just to have a paycheck. I'm there because I am still observing, and I want to really make a difference. So that's why I'm doing all these years here, so we actually, we can have a better world. So, seeing that those are my remarks.
Well, thank you for coming down. Would you introduce your guests with you?
Yeah, this is my best friend, Renee Rome. She's been with me and supporting, you know, all this time. So I really want to thank her and all my family, my husband, my son, and everyone else that's been supporting, you know, continues to support me all these years.
Well, I want to thank you for coming down tonight. Any comments from my colleagues? What I certainly want to thank you for coming down, there was a distinguished panel of women. In the Supreme Court, the chief justice was the keynote speaker. And so you were in very, very good company. And when she received the, was elected as the nominee, she got a standing ovation from everyone. And so congratulations to you. We appreciate everything that you're doing. Please continue your work for all of us as you continue to provide quality and service and contribute to our community in such a significant way. God bless you, and thank you for your work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you once again.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Klein, President Pro Tem Miller, Councilmember Mills, Councilmember Paley.
I don't have any resolutions this evening, but I would like to congratulate Councilmember Mills, who is going to receive two community honors this week. On Wednesday, Councilmember Mills will be named one of the YWCA's Women of Achievement for 2013, being recognized for her work not only on city council, but for her many years of dedication to improving the lives of Columbus residents through her work at St. Stephen's Community House and other social service organizations. And in addition, on Thursday, Councilmember Mills will be named the Public Official of the Year by the Ohio Chapter of the National Association of Social Workers, Region Five. Congratulations, Councilmember Mills.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Tyson.
Yes, I have one resolution this evening, and I'm going to ask Ryan Johnson, who's the Director of Minority Health Division for Columbus Public Health, and Angela Cornelius Dawson, who is the Director of the State of Ohio Commission on Minority Health. And the resolution is number 0071X, that's 2013, to declare April 12, April 2013, to be Minority Health Month in Columbus. Whereas in 1989, the Ohio Commission on Minority Health developed the concept of High Visibility Campaign, designed to focus on health awareness and disease prevention. And whereas the resulting 30-day campaign would become Minority Health Month, which became a national celebration in 2000. And whereas the five goals of Minority Health Month are to provide information for individuals to practice disease prevention, to promote healthy lifestyles, to showcase the resources for and providers of grassroots health care and information, to bring attention to the desperate health conditions between Ohio's minority and non-minority populations, and to gain support for ongoing efforts to improve minority health year-round. And whereas the Columbus Office of Minority Health provides leadership to reduce health inequities in minority communities of Columbus and its surrounding areas. And whereas the Office of Minority Health is working with more than 30 community partners to present programming throughout April that will bring attention to health issues in our community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, that we do hereby declare April of 2013 to be Minority Health Month in Columbus. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you, and I will start with Angela Cornelius Dawson to share some of the programs that are going on and any information regarding Minority Health Month.
Certainly, and certainly to President Ginter and the esteemed members of the City Council of Columbus, Ohio. We certainly appreciate the recognition on behalf of the Ohio Commission on Minority Health with its 19-member governor-appointed board and our staff. We certainly say thank you for being an outstanding city council. We will have activities across the state of Ohio, and you can certainly obtain our calendar at our website at www.mih ohio.gov. And you can obtain the calendar certainly on our website, but there will be over 120 activities across 20 counties in the state of Ohio. But I do have to commend this city council and let you know that it is this type of leadership and support to address health disparities within this state that makes such a difference. There are only two states in the nation that actually support local offices of minority health. New York having one office and the great state of Ohio having six. One of those offices, of course, is in the city of Columbus, and it is through your leadership and your commitment to eliminating health disparities that you provide support and leadership for our local office of minority health. And so we thank you for not allowing the dream of access to health care be deferred. Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Director Dawson. Good evening. On behalf of my colleagues that are sitting in the back, and Dr. Teresa C. Long, Health Commissioner of Columbus Public Health, I would like to say thank you for this resolution of expression. Again, my name is Ryan Johnson, and I am the program director for the Columbus Office of Minority Health. The mission of the Columbus Office of Minority Health is to provide leadership to reduce health inequities in minority communities of Columbus and its surrounding areas. Columbus Public Health has an important role in activating efforts to educate citizens and professionals on imperative health care issues. This is achieved through our four core competencies: monitoring and reporting the health status of minority populations, informing, educating, and empowering; mobilizing community partnerships and actions; and developing policies and plans that support health efforts. I've provided each of you a packet of information highlighting our accomplishments for the past year, as well as activities during April, which is Minority Health Month. Community forums are coordinated by our office to provide Columbus residents education on a variety of health issues tailored to specific communities. We will be providing a Latino and Somali community forum during Minority Health Month. A special thank you to Jesus Avayi and Hebrew Noir, Columbus Public Health staff, who have worked tirelessly to coordinate these initiatives. And so the Latino community forum focusing on physical activity and nutrition will be held on April 20 at the Federson Community Center, 3911 Dresden Street, at 11 o'clock. The Somali community forum focusing on diabetes awareness and prevention will be held on April 27 at the Somali Community Association, 3422 Cleveland Avenue, starting at noon. And so for more information on any of the Columbus Office of Minority Health activities or any information that I've shared with you this evening, please feel free to contact me, Ryan Johnson, at 645-7335, or REJohnson@columbus.gov. And I thank you so very much.
Thank you so much, Ryan and Angela, for coming down and in support of Minority Health Month. We truly do appreciate the work that you do each and every day in our communities so that we can make sure that the inequities in terms of health care for people of color, that will someday, we won't have those inequities. And so just appreciate your work, and especially this month, all the programs that will be happening only in Columbus, Ohio, but certainly around our state. And we'll make sure that this information, I think, is on the website for the programs that are going on in Columbus, Ohio. And we just encourage all of our residents to take advantage of these programs so that they will know if they have any health issues and that they can be, if they do, you certainly will be to direct them in the right areas to be able to deal with those health care issues. So I thank you for the work that you do. Are there any comments from any of my councilmembers? Hearing none, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, and I'll probably catch Director Cavan off-guard here a little bit, but I think I didn't want us to miss an opportunity to welcome a very special guest to council chambers this evening. Director Cavan, would you mind coming forward to the podium and introducing Mr. Robert Bell with the Intelligent Communities Forum? We're putting our best foot forward tonight and over the next couple of days with Mr. Bell and his colleagues to introduce them and show them firsthand why we are open and smart and why we believe we are the number one, should be the number one-ranked intelligent city in the world. So Director Cavan, could you talk a little bit about this and introduce Mr. Bell?
Yes, sir. President Ginter, President Pro Tem Miller, other members of council. As you know, recently, we applied to the Intelligent Community Forum, and the list was narrowed down to 21. We made the top 21. Subsequently, we made the top seven. What that means is we're one of the most intelligent communities, cities in the world. We're the only one in the United States voted in the top seven. The final decision will be made in June. Hopefully, we'll be number one. We deserve it. You're exactly right. Thanks to all of you and your support, support from the administration, the collaboration of the business community, not-for-profit community, and our technology community is why we're here today. We have an action-packed three days for Mr. Bell. I think he's a little tired even as we speak, but we're not going to let him slow down. We're going to take him through all the motions and see this great city. He's never been here before. Hopefully, when he leaves here, he'll have the same impression that most have when they come to our city, that this is one of the greatest cities in the world. So we're excited about that. I'm going to let Mr. Bell now come up and talk a little bit about the Intelligent Forum community, if you would.
President Ginter, President Pro Tem Miller, and distinguished members of council, thank you very much for your welcome here this afternoon. It has been a busy day. There'll be some more busy days. I'm reminded that one of the characteristics that I see in intelligent communities around the world, there are about 120 of them that we've counted, and they're in all the continents of the world, is that they tend to lean toward being proud of themselves. So congratulations. I'm here because of a journey that ICF's co-founders started about 14 years ago, and it's a journey that Metropolitan Columbus has joined us on this year, and we're very pleased to have you. I'll be speaking more about that on Tuesday night, but today, I just want to welcome you formally to a global family of 120 communities in the Americas, in Europe, in the Asia-Pacific, in Africa, cities, towns, regions, from mega-cities of millions to tiny rural towns of 17,000 people. And they all have something in common. They all recognize that the economy of the 21st century will be very, very different from what went before, and that they can either get ahead of it or they can fall behind. They realize that this new economy calls for new infrastructure. While we go on repairing our roads and our rails and our bridges and our airports that we have unfortunately in recent decades let decline, we also need aggressive investment in information and communications technology in broadband, which has become essential to growth. All other things being equal, and of course, all other things are never equal, but all other things being equal, the city with the best infrastructure wins. This vision also calls for people with much greater knowledge, for people with sharper skills and with the ability to contribute value to everything that they touch. It's said that invention is the art of turning cash into ideas, but innovation is the art of turning ideas into cash. That's why intelligent communities make innovation a team sport. It calls for forward-thinking from leaders in government, from leaders in industry, from leaders in education, institutions like health care, who will work together like brothers and sisters and do not defend their turf like enemies. It also calls for a special commitment to people who have long been marginal in our economies and in our societies, and those who may indeed be further marginalized by rapid economic change. Intelligent communities make that commitment to lift everyone up to the best of their ability and to bring them with us to the broadband economy. So how did Columbus, Metropolitan Columbus, and the city itself join us in this journey? It did start not too long ago, last year, when you raised your hand and said, "evaluate us." And we know that communities like yours do not undertake this kind of thing lightly. You put yourself basically into contention with about 400 communities on average, we track around the world, every year. And from that 400 communities, we selected Columbus as one of our Smart 21, as we call them. And that's when the real work got underway, because your leaders had to complete a very detailed questionnaire that required you to draw on data from many, many sectors, a lot of conversations, a lot of work. And more analysis compared you with 20 other communities, and once again, Columbus rose to the top, was ranked among the top seven intelligent communities of the world, which is a very, very special honor. In June, you, your representatives, along with those of six other communities, will come to New York and will participate in a very exciting thing we call the Summit. You will meet people around the world who have the same challenges you have, who have similar visions, from whom you can learn and who you can teach. And at the end of that process, we will announce one of you as the top, as the Intelligent Community of the Year, and I don't get to make that choice. I'm here as, I've been called a judge, but I'm really here more as a reporter. I and my fellow co-founders visit all seven communities. We write reports. Those go into the mix which are considered by an independent panel, and they choose one of those communities. So the message I want to leave you with is, whatever happens next, you've accomplished great things, and our network of intelligent communities becomes available to you for whatever purpose you might want. That's something we can discuss more after June 7, when one of those top seven will be named Intelligent Community of the Year. As always, I hope it's one of mine. So I wish you the best of luck, and I want to thank you all for sharing the journey with us.
Well, if you need any help preparing your report, you let us know.
Oh, by all means.
We'll be happy to do our part, but I know that some other great partners joined us today. Dwight Smith with Sophisticated Systems, as well as the new executive director, CEO of Experienced Columbus, Brian Ross, as well as Pam Springer of Manta at lunch. And a very focused and determined mayor was making a great case, and I know that Experienced Columbus and Director Cavan have packed the next couple of days for Mr. Bell to really give him a good sense of all of Columbus and why, both on a grander scale and also at the neighborhood level, why we are such a strong candidate to be rated number one. So good luck to you, Mr. Bell. We are very proud that we're in the top seven, and we look forward to being named number one. Any comments, President Pro Tem Miller?
Perfect timing, because tonight, as we approve our capital budget, we do have a portion in there for fiber. So put that in your notes and make sure that's...
I don't see how I could avoid it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bell. Director Cavan, thank you for all of your work and commitment to this. Are there any comments from our elected officials, the city auditor, city attorney, any members of the administration? I don't think the municipal judges are here. Welcome commissioners, for, thank you for being here this evening. This time, I request that the following ordinances be removed from the Consent Action portion of the agenda in Health and Human Services, ordinance 0761-2013. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the Consent Action portion of the agenda? If not, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk?
So move.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Administration Committee, ordinance 743-2013. Development Committee, ordinance is 723, 724, 725, 727, 728, 729-2013. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance 2689-2012. Ordinance is 683-2013. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 401, 522, 547, 556, 558, 575, 635, 642, and 648-2013. Zoning Committee, ordinance is 739-2012, 768, and 771-2013.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolution of Expression 65X-2013. Finance Committee- Finance Committee, Ordinance is 548, 602, 611, 730, 742, 750, and 786-2013. Health and Human Services Committee, Ordinance is 722, 732-2013. Development Committee, Ordinance is 528, 689, 715, 716, 717, 718, 721-2013. Recreation and Parks Committee, Ordinance is 580, 670, 674, 676, and 678-2013. Technology Committee, Ordinance is 618, 652, 719, 726-2013. Public Safety and Judiciary Committee, Ordinance is 207, 423, 577, 622, 693, 694, 695, 697, 698, 699, 714, and 746-2013. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Ordinance is 537, 551, 49X-2013. Ordinance is 653, 681, 686-2013. Resolution 58X-2013, 61X, Ordinance is 755, and 757-2013. Public Utilities Committee, Ordinance is 395, 437, 446, 452, 458, 470, 501, 532, 539, 561, 637, 638, 639, 650, 651, 731, and 733-2013.
We do have one speaker on the consent agenda this evening. Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome to Council Chambers. If you'd come forward to the podium, you have signed up to speak on 0715-2013. I believe in support of it. Mr. Wilkins?
Thank you again for having me back. 1612 Arlington Avenue, Chairman of Solly Vacant and Abandoned Properties. I've just got several questions. I want to know how long that this real property has been holding the land bank, and what will it be used for? And who has the title of this property? That's what I would like to know if I could get those answers. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, for coming down this evening. Any comments or questions for Mr. Wilkins? Interim Director Brandon, is, do you have any responses or information that you can provide regarding 0715 and Mr. Wilkins' questions?
I would just say if he has any questions about specific properties, Hannah Jones is in the chambers tonight, and she can probably address those, or at least get the information from him, and we can look into it and get back with him.
Thank you, Director Brandon. Any other questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? If not, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions? Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig.
Yes.
Klein, Miller, Mills.
Yes, with the exception of 0750-2013 and 0423-2013, on which I am abstaining.
Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Yes, consent agenda carries. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table on emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. The first ordinance is 0599-2013, to authorize the Department of Finance and Management to contract with Experienced Columbus for marketing services, to increase tourism and convention business, and strengthen the image of the City of Columbus, Ohio, to authorize expenditure of 2.19%, presently estimated at $7,270,000 of a combined rate of 5.1% of the hotel motel excise tax, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance tonight really represents, and also represents, an increase in funding for Experienced Columbus. Last year, they got 1.5%. This year, they will be receiving 2.19%. Last year, they received dollars from the, from the bed tax, as well as the general fund, they received approximately $6,440,000. This year, they will be receiving, as I mentioned, $7.2 million, and this is an increase of $830,000. This is really a major commitment to economic development in our community. They have a five-year plan that plans to make Columbus really a significant player in the convention and tourism business. The goal is to increase the number of hotel rooms that, conventions that have 750 rooms from, right, from presently 28% to 46%. The goal is to add another 5,500 jobs to our community, and that is significant. But they also made some significant achievements in 2012. They booked future meetings that will account for 480,250-room nights, which is a 2.3% increase over what was booked in, what was booked in 2011. They also, in 2012, their hotel occupancy rate was 62%, which was up from 59.5%. And the average daily room rate was about $85. They opened up national offices in Washington, DC, and Chicago. And the significant impact was the opening of the New Hilton Hotel. And also, lastly, it's just that, again, they are a significant player in terms of the economic development in our community. And then the audience today is the President and CEO, Brian Ross, and I see, and also Ms. Linda Logan, who also this week will be receiving a Women of Achievement Award with Councilmember Mills this Wednesday. And also in the audience is Mike Brown. And so I don't know if, Mr. Ross, you'll make any comments this evening? That'd be great. Please come to the podium. And Linda? And Bruce? Bruce is...
Thank you very much, Councilmember. President Ginther, Councilmembers, just wanted to say thank you very much. I am here with Bruce Harkie, one of our board members, with Franklin Park Conservatory, and obviously Linda Logan, Executive Director for the Greater Columbus Sports Commission. But we do appreciate the increased investment, and as you mentioned, we are executing our five-year aspirational plan to make this a premier visitor destination, and basically increase the tourism economy, which will help the jobs and taxes. So we do appreciate it. Auditor Dorian, thank you as well, and Mayor Coleman, so we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, very much. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
No. No. Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance tonight will be ordinance number 0645-2013. It is to adopt a capital improvements budget for 12 months, ending December 31, 2013, or until such a time as a new capital improvements budget is adopted, establishing a project budget for capital improvements, requiring legislative authorization in 2013, to repeal ordinance number 0368-2012 as amended and to declare an emergency. First, I move to take from the table.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. This legislation is a result of more than a year of planning, dialogue, and public engagement, which began with our community meetings. We use data generated from the city's 311 system and public testimony from various public comments received throughout the year. This budget has $348 million in 2012 carryover, $374 million in new capital investment. All funds total $727,873,212. Collectively, these investments will improve our roads, bridges, sidewalks, and other critical public infrastructure, equip our safety forces with the tools they need to improve their effectiveness, invest in our recreational facilities, at streetlights to neighborhoods, and continue to provide funding to demolish vacant abandoned structures which endanger our residents and more. It also has $32 million in resurfacing, the largest resurfacing that we've had ever in this community. I'd like to thank this council, the mayor, his administration, Paul Rakowski, and especially Rob Newman and Cal Seaver, and Mr. Dorian, and our residents for your work and your commitment to making this community thrive. So first of all, Director Rakowski, do you want to make any comments?
President Ginther, Chair Tyson, I'm just excited that we're getting the budget passed, and we're going to start moving forward with a lot of the great projects that I have within my own department, let alone these other projects that are going to make the city a better place than it even is currently, to live, work, and raise a family. And I just appreciate the support of council as we move forward with all these great projects and the jobs that are going to be created, both in architectural and engineering and design jobs, as well as all the construction jobs that are going to be supported through this capital budget.
Thank you, Director. Mr. Auditor Dorian, do you might want to make any comments this evening? Thank you. And now I'd like to recognize my councilmembers to highlight some of their amendments that they have in this budget. Councilmember Craig.
Thank you very much, Chairman Tyson. Let me also thank you for helping to shepherd through this important legislation. This budget is vitally important. Our capital budget is critical to the needs of our city. I'm proud to continue City Council's long commitment of support to the Community Shelter Board, which provides emergency shelter and services to thousands of people each year. Beyond a secure and clean place to sleep, all programs provide access to basic services such as showers, meals, healthcare, and material assistance. The shelters also serve as an entry point to supportive transitional and other affordable housing. This year's capital budget provides $250,000 in funding for CSB's Rebuilding Lives program. The Rebuilding Lives Plan helps to end homelessness by meeting both the short and long-term needs of homeless men and women. Services include coordination of social services and referrals to physical and mental health agencies. Funding will help rebuilding lives with ongoing capital needs. Coupled with this important resource allocation is the continuation of council's support of the city's veterans through the critical and significant appropriation of the Better Municipal Care for Veterans Housing Fund. And again, with all of the things that you have mentioned, roads and bridges, and others we'll talk about, all of the critical services, we're deeply grateful for the president's support, your leadership, certainly the administration's commitment and leadership in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Klein.
Thank you, Chair. Tonight, I'd like to recognize two pieces of legislation, one originating out of development, the other originating out of vacant parks, because I chair both committees. The first is in conjunction with the council president, and the council president pro tem is a $2.195 million investment in NCR districts, which are neighborhood commercial revitalization districts. They're areas of town that are somewhat struggling, but with this investment can help bring businesses and customers to the area, and which will make, in the end, a stronger Columbus. The money will go to streetscape improvements within the NCR district to make them more attractive to business and customers, as well as facade improvements in conjunction with the full funding of the Neighborhood Design Center to help those businesses improve the facades of the businesses, as well as small business improvement grants. The other capital improvement, or capital budget amendment that I'd like to highlight is the Wilson Road Parkland Project, which is 199 South Wilson Road, just north of Sullivan Avenue. It's contiguous to Camp Chase, where the city, in conjunction with other partners, is investing $2.75 million and already budgeted for trail work. The Wilson Road Park Project, the money will go to developing a park entrance, parking, grading, and seating for multipurpose athletic fields and facilities, as well as the development, the possibility of the development, and what it actually will be is still being shaped of a bike hub in that facility as well, to pair with the Camp Chase, the connecting from the city's portion that can connect Cleveland to Cincinnati via bike. So I certainly thank the leadership of the chair in shepherding us through this process. And there's a lot of great amendments and a lot of great priorities, not only from the administration, but council, to make Columbus a terrific place and continue the work that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. President Pro Tem Miller.
Thank you, Chair Tyson. The City of Columbus has always viewed fiber as an economic development tool for the attraction and growth of small businesses. Companies, and not necessarily just technology firms, require fiber for faster work applications. Where there is fiber, that's where you can also have jobs. In this year's capital budget, Columbus is working to complete a more robust fiber network within the City of Columbus, and this is moving the fiber into more parts of the Columbus neighborhood. So I'd like to thank the administration and also City Council for this support and understanding exactly how important fiber is. And as you heard earlier, it's one of the criterias that the intelligent community is looking for in their judgment of the city. So this is something I think that we have, we've got a good head start on, and something that we need to keep, make sure that we have this momentum in economic development by using fiber.
Thank you. Councilmember Mills.
Thank you, Chair Tyson. I am extremely proud of our continued investment in supporting our safety forces, because the end result is the protection of our citizens, and that is a number-one priority. But this particular evening, I would like to highlight again our investment in neighborhood safety cameras. Again, this is not the only amendment, but one that I think is extremely important, has been community-driven in partnership with the wonderful Department of Public Safety and all of our community leaders, our commissioners, who've shared with us their concerns in certain areas, to get to the part where we have a very aggressive and very effective neighborhood safety program. And so I am proud of the amendment of $500,000 to continue investing and purchasing more cameras for the safety of our neighborhoods, and most importantly, the safety of our residents. So thank you again, Chair Tyson, for your work, and all of the folks in finance, and again, to the great Department of Public Safety who have spearheaded this project and done a great job. We've been ahead of schedule and continue to move forward and listening to the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Paley.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. In response to constituent feedback and work being done by the Council on Disabilities, I became very interested in our city's ADA curb ramp repair program and the number of requests related to repairs and new ramp installations that have come in through 311 by concerned constituents. While Columbus is actually ahead of many other large cities when it comes to the investments on new ADA curb ramps in conjunction with our street resurfacing program, we will have many unmet repair needs that I believe need to be tackled in this coming year. Working closely with Director Kelsey and Randy Bowman of Mobility Options, I was pleased to see that the mayor's proposed capital improvement budget included $750,000 to begin this work. As tackling the repairs of the ADA curb ramps is one of my top priorities for public service and transportation, I am pleased to sponsor an amendment increasing the investment in ADA curb ramps repair and new installations in connection with resurfacing projects by another $500,000. My goal is to catch up on all curb ramp repairs within five years, so we can begin an annual maintenance program preventing an inaccessible or dangerous ADA ramp in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. My amendments support my ongoing commitment to our quality of life, and that's focusing on health, human services, and the arts. And so with that, with some of my councilmembers being co-sponsors, some of them, Council President Ginther, councilmembers that Klein, there are a number of amendments that we'll be making in terms of the arts, focusing really on the, and our cultural services, the Columbus Museum of Art, Franklin Park Conservatory, the King Arts Complex. We'll also be working on Wonderland, healthy places in regards to health, and we also the faith mission. So those are just a number of the amendments that I would be making through my commitment, through my committee. Thank you. And again, I'm very proud and pleased to work with my councilmembers and the administration. So those are just a number of the amendments that I would be making through my commitment, through my committee. Thank you. And again, I'm very proud and pleased to work with my council members and the administration. It was a, a great, it took a long time to get this done, a lot of hard work. And so I thank each and every one of you for your commitment to the capital budget. And we have a couple of speakers who want to come up and speak on these, on the capital budget. The first speaker is Nancy Reinhardt, who represents the Hilltop Business Association. Good evening.
Hello. I'm Nancy Reinhardt, and thank you, President Ginther and councilpeople for, for having us this evening. It's an impressive capital improvements budget that you've laid forward for us, and we're here to see a lot of good things come up. First of all, the NCR funds, thank you so much. We, those are best money that we use diligently and if the businesses do, you appreciate it. You'll see some continual work with neighborhood design too, I'm sure, coming through with some of those NCR funds. But I'm here basically to talk about the Healthy Places Fund that we've been using on the Hilltop too. That's an important fund for us to see. We see these improvements come through bringing amenities to neighborhoods that make the neighborhoods safer, bring people out into walking in a healthier lifestyle. Those funds, even though they might be used on a small scale for projects, and they promote opportunities for communities to come together and promote safe and active living to be realized in neighborhoods throughout the city of Columbus, not just in the Hilltop. At the Hilltop in particular, used these funds last year for a public arts project, and we had probably 200 people come out for a public arts installation and, and a festival that came along with that promoting not only our public's art, but our community gardens at the same time. So again, we're grateful for the funds that you have put forward for this and especially for the capital improvements budget overall that's come through this year. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down this evening. And then, thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Bruce Harkey from Franklin Park Conservatory.
Thank you, Bruce Harkey from Franklin Park Conservatory and Botanical Gardens. I'm honored to be up here twice this evening. President Ginther, Councilmember Tyson, Councilmember Klein, we are so thankful for the continued partnership with the city of Columbus. I think we've had a long partnership and we continue to make investments in Franklin Park Conservatory. And Brian mentioned earlier, the Experience Columbus Initiative to really boost tourism. And I think the amendment for the 2013 capital budget will certainly help the conservatory as we plan for a really exciting exhibition coming up this fall that we think will be at the level of Dale Chuhuli's exhibition in 2003 Bruce Monroe. And the dollars will be used not only for deferred maintenance, but also to get ready to do the appropriate electrical upgrades to handle that show. So we hope to see everyone at the conservatory soon. Thank you again for all your support.
Thank you, Bruce, for coming down this evening. We do not have any other public speakers, so I want to move forward with, with the legislation. And again, it is 727 million, 727 million, 873,212 dollars. And this is so exciting for the city of Columbus. And so now I move to men, submitted to the clerk.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And I'll move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0677-2013 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to contract the Rycard properties for the purchase of a Ford F-550 CNG fuel, refueling service truck to authorize the appropriation expenditure of $83,500 from the Special Income Tax Fund and to declare an emergency. This truck will primarily be used during emergencies to support CNG vehicles. This will also be a CNG-fueled vehicle as well. Again, this is a, will be a really unique mobile unit. It is why we are the number one green fleet in the country. And this will, by using, having a CNG vehicles, it certainly helps us keep our commitment to our community about making sure that the city of Columbus will continue to be efficient. And the city will have between 65 and 85 CNG units in service by the end of this year. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. I'd now like to move to health. Thank you. In health, I have Resolution Number 0734-2012 to authorize the appropriation of $10,000 from the unallocated balance of the cultural services portion of the city's hotel motel tax fund to authorize expenditure of $25,000 from the Health Special Revenue Fund and $10,000 from the cultural services portion of the city's hotel motel tax fund to pay the Columbus Foundation for, the Foundation for Active Living, for the management of the 2013 community gardening projects and to declare an emergency. This fund really started in 2010 with, with $5,000. We supported 14 gardens. Last year, we had 35 gardens. We had a partner with Fifth Third Bank, as well as Scotts Miracle Grow. This year, as part of the 2013 operating budget, we already have 60 grant applications and Scotts Miracle Grow will be joining again as a sponsor, and the grant winners will be announced April 22nd at Franklin Park Conservatory. And I have a speaker, Rebecca Asmo, from the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club, that's here this evening. Good evening.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you, Chairwoman Tyson, President Ginther, members of council. Thank you for inviting me here today to speak about the impact that the Community Garden Grant Program has had on our organization and the kids that we serve. So in 2010, we were actually one of the first recipients of a grant to do a community garden at our West Side Club. And since then, every single year, we have taken advantage of the funds, and it's really helped us to grow the program exponentially. So since we started with a really small garden across the street from our West Side Club, we were able to add some box gardens to our Milo Grogan Club, and that actually helped us leverage a partnership with our neighbors at Limbok Company down the street. And they are now at the club every single day during growing season, working with our kids. They have donated to help support the garden, and we are in the process of acquiring a property that's adjacent to the club, that has an abandoned house on it, and actually remediate that property and turn it into a garden. At our West Side Club, we've continued to grow that program as well, and we are partnering with Local Matters, the Puffin Foundation, and some community volunteers this year to move our garden to the other side of the street, so right in front of our club, so we can take advantage of some downspouts and, and, you know, they'll have some watering apparatuses for us. But again, volunteers will be working with our kids. We have started a gardening and wellness club at the West Side Club, and the kids have really just taken to it, and they so enjoy the opportunity to work with volunteers, to grow vegetables, to learn about making healthy snacks with those vegetables, and they really just love the responsibility of the gardens. So thank you, and if there's any other questions I can answer, please let me know.
No, thank you so much for coming down and certainly how you have leveraged those dollars to be able to bring volunteers to your organization, to be able to make sure that the young people that your programs are eating healthy food and see about growing healthy food. So I thank you for what you're doing in your community and just how community guards make such a tremendous difference in our community. So thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you, and feel free to visit anytime.
Thank you. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. If you would turn to page nine on, on the consent agenda, we have another ordinance. It's ordinance number 0761-2013. It's to authorize the Board of Health to enter into contracts with various community medical providers for the provision of HIV-related somatic medical care to persons living with HIV or AIDS in Delaware, Fairfield, Franklin, Licking, Madison, Marl, Pickaway, and Union Counties for the period of April 1 of 2013 through February 28 of 2014, to authorize expenditure of $600,000 from the Health Department Grants Fund to pay the cost thereof and to declare an emergency. Nancy Bechtel, do you want to speak a little bit about this program?
Certainly. Thank you, Councilwoman. The Ryan White Part 8 Program is the new multimillion-dollar federally funded contract to the Columbus Public Health from HERSA, the Health Resources and Services Administration. These funds are focused on caring for people living with HIV/AIDS in central Ohio, including the counties that you mentioned. Specifically, this program ensures individuals who have been recently diagnosed with HIV or AIDS, who have fallen out of care, are linked to and retained in medical care. This is not only important for the health of the infected individual, but also we know that viral suppression through regular medical care and routine medication reduces the transmission of the virus to nearly zero, thus making this program a vital component to eliminating and reducing HIV and AIDS in our community. Columbus was designated as a recipient of these funds due to the HIV and AIDS in our area over the last five years. We ask that if clients know that they're sexually active, they should know their HIV status by getting tested. They can call the Ryan White Program at 645-CARE or 645-2273. In addition, April is Sexual Transmitted Infection Awareness Month. So Ryan, Ryan White is the payer of Last Resort, but will pay for outpatient medical and behavioral health care for those who are income-eligible and who do not have private or government insurance such as Medicaid. It will also help with transportation to these appointments.
Thank you. And we, we receive these funds, we didn't, we didn't really go out and request the funds. They came to us because of the, the high numbers of individuals with HIV and AIDS in our community. And so we need to do as much as we can to continue to focus on AIDS prevention, as well as, I'm happy that we have these dollars to be able to support those individuals that have the disease, either HIV or AIDS, so they can get the proper care that they need to move forward. And a number, there are a number of providers who we'll be working with, and some of those include Nationwide Children's Hospital, the Mount Carmel Medical Group, Central Ohio Primary Care Physicians, there are a number. As we think also about Minority Health Month, we know that HIV, HIV and AIDS right now is very high in the minority communities. And so anything that we can do to take care of individuals who have contracted the disease, as well as prevention, is going to be, is really important in the city of Columbus. So with that, this again is direct care for those individuals. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. I have two announcements. The first is this Tuesday, tomorrow, April 2nd, Kid Smiles Pediatric Dental Clinic will host a grand opening celebration from 1:00 to 3:00 at their new facility located at 770 Bethel Road. Kid Smiles provides comprehensive preventive and diagnostic treatment to children for only $10 per visit, which includes routine cleanings, fillings, and other dental work that does not require general anesthesia. Kid Smiles does not bill private insurance or Medicaid and limits patients to those families far below 250% of the federal poverty level. You can call 614-458-1711. And lastly, the Career Transition Institute, formerly 40+ of central Ohio, will hold a resume boot camp for job seekers this Friday, April 5th, from noon to 5:00 at their offices located at 1100 King Avenue in the lower level, and the fee is $25, and you can call 614-297-0040. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Craig chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in the Administration Committee, I have ordinance 0705-2013 to amend the Management Compensation Plan, ordinance number 1150-2007, as amended by amending sections four, B, C, and D, by amending section 61.1G, and to declare an emergency. Ordinance 0705-2013 continues to make good on the commitment that the city made to taxpayers in 2009. At that time, we pledged to reduce the cost of government while maintaining the city's services that our residents rely on, and that is exactly what we have done. This ordinance continues the, the reduction in the city's pension pickup for employees covered under the MCP contract. Employees hired since January the 1st, 2010, do not receive the pickup. MCP employees will also continue to pay a greater share of their health care costs under this ordinance. Through 2019, Columbus is on track to save more than $202 million for taxpayers, primarily by bringing the benefits we offer into line with the market. This has more than doubled our original commitment to the residents of Columbus, and we continue to look for reforms and efficiencies. Director Christie, would you please provide more information regarding the achieved savings and efficiencies regarding this ordinance?
President Ginther, Chairman Craig, members of council, good evening. Chairman Craig, I think that your comments and the background that you've provided captures the essence of the ordinance, but allow me to share very briefly that one of the biggest challenges faced by most public employers is to effectively strike a balance between providing fair and equitable compensation and benefits in order to attract and retain the best caliber of employees, while at the same time being an excellent steward of the revenue provided by our taxpayers. Your support of this ordinance enables the city to accomplish this balance for our MCP employees in much the same fashion that we achieved through negotiations with our labor partners that represent many of our unionized employees. This ordinance enables us, as you shared, to fulfill the recommendations of the Economic Advisory Committee and to honor the commitment made to our taxpayers and to our residents. It enables us to continue on the path of achieving, and in many respects succeeding, the goals of the 10-year Reforms and Efficiencies Action Plan that was set out by the administration beginning in 2009. It incrementally reduces the pension pickup benefit, as well as eliminating that benefit in its entirety by 2019. It also incrementally increases the health insurance contribution that is paid by our employees. While achieving these cost savings, we also strive to ensure that our compensation is competitive with the market, and in order to do that, we review our pay structures on an annual basis and adjust them as needed. Additionally, the city has been successful in working with our health care provider to implement the Healthy Columbus Wellness and Disease Management Programs, as well as other health and wellness initiatives, to ensure that we minimize the rate of growth of our health care costs. Certainly, we want to ensure that although our employees are paying a higher percentage of the premium contribution, that they're paying a higher percentage of a cost that is increasing by less than 5%, as opposed to what is closer to the national average of between 12 and 15%. I sincerely believe that the city in moving forward with this initiative and with this particular ordinance tonight is doing an effective job of achieving that balance that I alluded to, and I respectfully urge your continued support. I thank you for your support and urge your passage of this particular ordinance.
Any questions from colleagues hearing now? And again, Director, I want to certainly thank you and your staff for your work. This is a comprehensive approach, and we continue to, to move forward. We have yet work to do, but this certainly is a, is a significant move forward, and we certainly thank the public and, and their support of our work, the advisory committee and, and all of those who serve there. So we continue our work to do the due diligence and to ensure, to ensure the efficiencies and effectiveness of government that we were charged to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I move for, move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. That's all that I have, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Our next committee is the Development Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. First and
First in development, 634-2013, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Town Square Limited Partnership for a tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 years on real property improvements in consideration of a proposed total investment of $1.45 million. Interim Director Brandon, can you give us just a highlight of what this project is?
Thank you, Chairman Klein, President Ginther, and members of council. This proposed project involves the renovation of 6,615 square feet, formerly home of Cord Camera in downtown Columbus. It's located in the center of downtown, and the creation of new employment in the city is always a plus for us. The site will be refitted with retail operation on the first floor, office and condominiums, and we are seeking your support for this 75% for a period of 10 years on real property improvements.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
The next piece is 634-2013. We continue the good news of job creation. To authorize the Director of Development to enter into a jobs growth incentive agreement with Spectrum Commercial Coatings LLC equal to 25% of the amount of new income tax withheld on employees for a term of five years, in consideration with the company's investment of $153,400, the creation of 30 new full-time permanent positions, and the retention of two existing employees. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
For 659-2013, I'd like to yield the floor to now-Chairman Tyson.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Ordinance 0659-2013, to authorize a development director to enter into contracts with various contractors for grass mowing and litter control services during the 2013 season. To authorize a development director to issue purchase orders for tipping fees. To authorize expenditure of $600,000 from the general fund. To authorize expenditure of $158,895 from the Community Development Block Grant Fund. And to authorize expenditure of $97,461 from the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund. And to declare an emergency. And again, this legislation is for grass mowing and litter control, and there are a number of small businesses and as well as community group associations that will be participating in this contract. A couple of them, in terms of the neighborhood organizations, are the Clintonville Beach Wall Community Resource Center, the Driving Park Association, Gladden Community House, Greater London Development Corporation, the Marion Franklin Civic Association, and the Pine Hill Civic Association. And just if you are in a community and you're seeing tall grass and vacant abandoned properties, I would suggest for the residents who are listening and the viewing, to dial 311 so that these individuals can come out and can cut that tall grass. So with that, I'd like to move to amend to 30-day.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Now I move to wave second reading and ask for a voice vote.
Second. Craig.
Yes.
Klein, Miller, Mills.
Epstein.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Yes, now I will move for passage by voice vote.
Craig.
Yes.
Klein, Miller, Mills.
Epstein.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Thank you. And now, I will move this to the Chairman of the Development Committee, Chairman Klein.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Next in development is 664-2013, to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with Columbus Next Generation Corporation to provide support for services which advance economic development initiatives in specific areas of the city, to authorize the expenditure of $500,000 from the General Fund and Community Development Block Grant Fund, and to declare an emergency. Interim Director Brandon or Director Rakowski, I'll tee this up for either of you, just because I know it's in my committee, but it's to authorize the Director of Finance. Just a specification, if you could clarify rather than specify, clarify what the purpose of Next Gen is, because I know there's been a lot of talk about Next Gen in Franklinton, and I know that there are a lot of opportunities in the Franklinton area. But if you could clarify the role and purpose of Next Gen and how this particular piece of legislation marries with some of the other legislation that we've seen authorizing the Department of Development to enter into land purchase agreements in the Franklinton area specifically. So, to the person that may not know, it seems like it's a redundant effort that the Department of Development's buying land, and then Next Gen would buy land, but if Next Gen serves another purpose, you know, obviously a citywide purpose. If you just could clarify for us exactly the purpose of Next Gen and how that marries with previous legislation that we've seen that is Franklinton-specific. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Klein, President Ginther, and members of council. The Columbus Next Gen Development Corporation was created by the mayor and passed by City Council in October. This nonprofit corporation was established to advance, encourage, and promote initiatives associated with industrial, economic, and commercial development throughout the city of Columbus. Franklinton was one of the, or East Franklinton, is one of the neighborhoods that we are currently working in. It was one of the first that we started this major acquisition and land assemblage project. However, the Next Gen Development Corporation will focus on neighborhoods throughout the city of Columbus. It is not just for Franklinton. We are just now getting this corporation up and running. However, the efforts in Franklinton have been ongoing for some time. So what you've seen in the past is legislation that has allowed us to acquire land, working in partnership with FDA. It's allowed us to do that up to this point. You will also see legislation coming before you in the next couple of weeks to continue that acquisition in that area. However, the funds associated with this contract and legislation will support the operation of the Next Gen Development Office, acquisition and development of real estate throughout the city, and management of various projects. And I'll let Director Rakowski elaborate if he feels that he needs to do so, but I do thank you for your support of this and thank you for your support of the partnership that we're creating with Next Gen Corporation.
That was a terrific explanation, and I appreciate that. Director Rakowski.
President Ginther, Chairman Klein, other members of council, I would just say that we're also working on another initiative that's tied to that effort with the broadband. Obviously, this is going to take some time for us to get that moving forward. We're, as I think Councilmember Miller described in the capital budget, we have some pieces that we need to complete in regard to making that fiber, light that fiber up for the uses that we have envisioned, but eventually, some of the revenue that's going to come from those agreements of using that fiber will go in to help seed some funding for Next Generation Corporation. But again, we're just getting that effort started. It'll be over the course of time, and it should grow over the course of time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Past. Mr. Chairman, if you would, I'd like to break at this point and come back to 0667-2013 after zoning, if that's all right with you.
It's fine, President.
Entertain a motion to recess regular meeting number 15.
So moved.
Call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand in recess. We will reconvene at 6:30 for regular meeting number 16, the zoning committee.
Regular meeting number 16 will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal?
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Are there any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
Thank you. We will now go to the zoning committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in the zoning committee, we have one item, 1917-2012, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3356.03(c)(4) permitted uses and 3312.43, required surface for parking of the Columbus City Code for the property located at 3871 Stelza Road, to permit outdoor storage of equipment, supplies, and materials, including landscaping materials, and parking on a gravel surface in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is more so holding company. The proposed use is the outdoor storage of equipment, supplies, and material, including landscaping materials. It received the Northeast Area Commission recommendation for approval, and also the City Department recommendation for approval. And I have no speaker slips. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to first to request to amend to emergency.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all we have in zoning tonight, President Ginther.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I get a motion to adjourn regular meeting number 16?
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Regular meeting number 16 stands in adjournment. We will reconvene regular meeting number 15 momentarily.
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. We are reconvening regular meeting number 15, and we were in the Development Committee, Chairman Klein, 0667-2013.
Thank you, President Ginther. 0667-2013 is an ordinance that is a direct result of work that the council has done in the community, particularly with the area commissions and our commission-on-commission meetings, where representatives from the various area commissions around Columbus have come to meet with members of the City Council and the Commission on Commissions Task Force that we formed to figure out what we could be doing better as a city to help them do their job as an area commission in the neighborhoods. And we found that one of the things that they needed was the $1,000 stipend simply wasn't enough to cover the overhead administrative costs for all the work that they're doing. These are volunteers out in the community. So, in dialogue with them and finding a number we thought was appropriate for them to accomplish their goals to help us accomplish ours, we came up with a $2,500 number. And in conjunction with Councilmember Miller, this is a direct result of the community dialogue and input that was a result of the Commission on Commissions meeting. Councilmember Miller, President Pro Tem Miller, if you'd like to add anything?
Thank you, Councilmember Klein, for introducing this. And again, like what he mentioned, it's something that we both sponsored. However, it got, of course, the full support of all of our other council members. And of course, what he mentioned earlier was that these are volunteers, and we really appreciate all their hard work in working with their community and making the improvements to the quality of life within their neighborhoods. So again, thank you, Councilmember Klein.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Miller. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
680-2013, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with the Affordable Housing Trust for Columbus and Franklin County to facilitate the production of affordable housing and enhance homeownership opportunities in Columbus. To authorize the appropriation and expenditure of 0.3% of the combined rates of 5.1% of the hotel motel excise tax, which is presently estimated at $1.42 million, and to declare an emergency. I know that Steve Gladman is here from the Affordable Housing Trust. Mr. Gladman, maybe give us an update on some of the things that the Affordable Housing Trust is doing? Thank you for coming down to council.
Thank you, President Ginther, Chairman. The Housing Trust is now, it's in 11th year, so we want to thank council for its past support and continued support of not only the trust, but our mission, which is to create and preserve affordable housing. Every year, we produce, along with our partners, our lending partners, our borrowing partners, between 400 and 700 affordable units throughout the city and the county. Those are everything from affordable, single-family, for-sale houses for folks of median income to folks that have special housing needs, rebuilding lives. As you passed some support earlier, we work very closely with the Shelter Board in providing permanent supportive housing. We also provide a wide range of affordable rental housing. So we're very pleased with our ability to work with for-profits and nonprofits, and this is one of the few expenditures you make every year that we actually preserve the principle, and if we do our job well, we actually make that grow a little bit. So last year, we loaned about $7 million, and we had new monies, as we call it, of about $3.5 million from the city and county. So, it leverages quite well. It leverages between $7 and $12 for every dollar that we lend. There's $7 to $12 of other dollars in those deals. So it leverages well. It's housing, it creates jobs, and it creates housing that's very much needed in the city and in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Gladman. You know, the Affordable Housing Trust does terrific work, and you've outlined many of the successes that you all have done in Columbus and in Franklin County, but there's more work to do. It's no secret that there's not enough affordable housing in central Ohio and Columbus, and it's incumbent upon us as elected leaders, including the mayor's office, to forge ahead to make sure that there's more affordable housing for folks that need it, because there is a demand, and we need to try as hard as we can to try to match the supply, because when we ask so much of folks that are looking for employment or children going to school, if you don't have your health and you don't have a roof over your head, how do you succeed? So, any questions or comments for Mr. Gladman? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments generally on this piece of legislation? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
72013, to authorize the expenditure of $532,214.71 from the Home Fund to provide funding for various approved programs and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
May I move to wrecking parks? First in wrecking parks, 657-2013, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a contract with the Goosebusters LLC, with the option to renew for three years on an annual basis for the control of geese population at city parks, to authorize the expenditure of $27,125 from the Recreation Fund, to waive the competitive bidding clauses of the Columbus City Code, and declare an emergency. Director McKnight, the Goosebusters. Why are we waiving competitive bidding?
President Ginther, Councilman Klein, members of council, I think, as you're aware, the geese in our parks in general, but in downtown, have left quite a mess sometimes, and it's quite expensive to clean that up. We started last year, and we went out and solicited some informal bids for some folks to do this last year, and we only got one bid, and it was from this company, Goosebusters. They did this work for about two months last year, and as funny as it sounds, they had a huge impact and generally improved the situation downtown in the parks. And they do that by bringing in dogs and some other methods to harass the geese and move them around, and hopefully, they get uncomfortable and move on and probably cause a problem for someone else, but at least they're not in our parks anymore. Based on their knowledge of the downtown riverfront and the newness of this contract, we wanted to continue with the same company, so we've asked to waive the bid and the fact that we didn't get any other bids last year when we did this.
Well, if you have a goose problem, you know who to call. Okay, I had to say it. Goosebusters, I had to say it. It was open the door, I walked right through. Councilmember Mills, do you have a question or comment?
Thank you, Director McKnight. I was curious about how you go about eradicating the problem of the geese, and the explanation helped me, and I do have a dog that's looking for a job. Okay.
Give us a call.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that's enough for 657-2013. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
665-2013, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into an agreement with Class Axe Columbus, Inc., to provide professional and fiscal services for 2013 programs, to authorize the expenditure of $145,000 from various funds, to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. Director McKnight on the waiving competitive bidding provisions.
President Ginther, Chairman Klein, members of council, again, this is a contract we've done annually. The company manages all of our contracts for the various entertainment, from Jazz and Rib Fest, and now all the events in Bicentennial Park. The company itself will actually only be paid a maximum of $20,000. The rest of...
They're bonded through the Revenue Committee that the city has and have all the appropriate designations to handle these funds so that we can successfully put on all of these events. So it's necessary to waive the bid to get through that process.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
672-2013, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Education in the amount of $2,068,856 for the 2013 Summer Food Program, to authorize the appropriation of $2,068,856 to the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund 286, to enter into an agreement with the Columbus City Schools to implement the Summer Food Program, to authorize the expenditure of $1.9 million from the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund 286, and to declare an emergency. We talked earlier about the Affordable Housing Trust and the opportunities that that provides for affordable housing. And I mean it when I say it, that you can't start your day, if you're a child, without a place that you can safely lay your head and you don't have your health. And part of that is being able to eat and have food. And this program, in conjunction with Columbus City Schools and the Ohio Department of Education and Wreckin' Parks, provides those opportunities in the summer for children that may not have the opportunity to eat. And this may, through this program, may be one of the few meals they have in the day. So it's incumbent upon us to promote this. It's incumbent upon us to tell the kids and to spread the word that this is available in the summer and let them know that they have a place that they can go to eat. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Chairman Klein, for this legislation. And I know that between this legislation and the one that's coming afterwards, how important that it is for young people to be able to have this food, especially in the summer. And if you think about, about 80% of our children in the school district receive free and reduced lunches, and you think about, and when school is out, maybe only about 12% of them are getting lunches, that this program is so, will get those lunches, 12% use the free and reduced lunch program, that we have a ways to go to continue to make sure that those young people have lunches during the summer. And I think there's enough, there's been enough research that has found that when kids don't get adequate nutrition in the summer, they return to school in the fall less prepared for school. And so this is so important, that we're feeding our children during the summer, and I thank you for this legislation.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Any other questions or comments? I move for passage by, I'm sorry, move for passage by voice vote.
Second.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mills?
I'm staying.
Paley?
Yes.
President Ginther.
And finally, a companion piece to the Summer Feeding Program, 735-2013, to authorize and direct the appropriation of $250,000 within the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund, to direct and transfer the appropriation of $250,000 from the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund to the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund for expenditures related to the Summer Food Program and to declare an emergency. And this is part, this particular expenditure is part of council's appropriation to increase participation in the Summer Food Program, to spread the word that it exists and get kids there to take advantage of the opportunity for the summer food that's available. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And that wraps up Recreation and Parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Small and Minority Business Development Committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. In the Small and Minority Business Development Committee, we have one item, which is 586-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a professional services contract with Crab Brown &amp; James LLP for the Small Business Inclusion Program Development Project, to authorize the expenditure of $150,000 from the Sewer System Operating Fund and $150,000 from the Water Operating Fund, and to declare an emergency. This legislation permits the vendor to perform research and engage community stakeholders and deliver a recommendation for a comprehensive small business inclusion master plan with a test model for implementation within the Department of Public Utilities. The Equal Business Opportunity Commission Office, IBACO, promotes the inclusiveness of minority-owned business enterprises, MBEs, and female-owned business enterprises, thus FPEs, within the city's procurement process and facilitates the equitable awarding of contracts to MBEs and FPEs. IBACO and the Department of Public Utilities will collaborate on this Small Business Inclusion Program Development Project to develop the best results for small businesses doing business within the city of Columbus. Director Carter, could you give us more details on this legislation?
President Ginther, President Pro Tem Miller, members of council, as you indicated, it is a collaboration with the Equal Business Opportunity Office and the Department of Public Utilities to look at, to explore and then implement a small business program, if those are the recommendations. We're going to engage the law firm that you cited to help us look at model programs across the country, do some research with respect to what's the best practices, and identify issues that we may have with our current program. So that is what is going to happen, what we're attempting to do with this legislation. And then from there, we're on a very short timeline. We're hoping by September, the end of September, we'll have a recommendation. That is after engaging the stakeholders and everyone who will be impacted. And after that recommendation is made, we'll determine how to proceed. But I know that Director Davies may have comments as well, because fortunately, the Department of Public Utilities is funding the project, and they're going to be working with us as a pilot, because their department is oftentimes where a bulk of the contracting, particularly in construction, dollars and professional services as well, is from the city. So, Director Davies?
Any comments, Director Davies?
Chair Miller, President Ginther, members of council, you've summed most of it up. I would just add that, you know, we're involved because we typically have the most dollars in design and construction, and similar to city council and the mayor, it's our goal to make sure all of our community has the opportunity to take part in this. And one of the key components of this is we want to make sure that we're working with city council, as you unveil a lot of your new small business programs, to make sure that we're helping and assisting in those and not in any sort of conflict. And I think that there will be no problem with that and look forward to working with everyone on it.
Great. And as Director Carter did mention, that the timing of these recommendations, remember, this is going to be information on what they find out with best practices across the country. So it's going to be important to know that this is not, this piece of legislation is not implementation of something, but actually, it's the research of coming up with the master plan.
Exactly.
Any other questions from other council members? If not, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all we have in the Small and Minority Business Development Committee, President Ginther.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Miller. Our next committee is the Public Safety and Judiciary Committee. Councilmember Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in Public Safety and Judiciary, I have the following ordinances, beginning with ordinance 0656-2013, to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with the Franklin County Public Defender Commission to provide legal counsel to indigent persons charged with criminal offenses, to authorize the expenditure of $1,198,477 from the General Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Franklin County Public Defender Commission performs all the duties and responsibilities required of the city under Section 12 of the City Charter, Chapter 173, by providing legal counsel to indigent persons charged with criminal offenses. Except for state charged misdemeanors, the city funds a municipal unit while the Franklin County Commissioners fund the balance. This has been in existence since 1976. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage and by calling for a voice vote.
Craig? Klein? Miller? Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
I'm staying.
President Ginther.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 0675, to authorize the appropriation of $760,000 from the Collection Fees Fund, to authorize the city attorney to renew contracts with Lineberger, Gogan, Blair, and Sampson LLP and Capital Recovery Systems, Inc., for the collection of delinquent accounts, to authorize the payment of court costs, reimbursement of collected overpayments, and accounting reversals as needed, to authorize the expenditure of $750,000 from said fund to waive the competitive procurement provisions of the Columbus City Codes and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage and ask for a voice vote.
Second.
Craig? Klein? Miller? Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
I'm staying.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginther.
The next two ordinance I have this evening are related to the ordinance passed earlier in administration related to the compensation for, through the Management Compensation Plan. First, beginning with ordinance 0707-2013, to amend ordinance number 076-2006 as amended, the Police Management Compensation Plan by amending Sections 3A and 7K and to declare an emergency. This allows for the adjustments in the pay structure for police in order to be aligned with the market. It also increases the employee insurance contribution to 11 and 1/2% effective April 1st, 2013. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0708-2013, to amend the Fire Management Compensation Plan, ordinance number 0664-2006, as amended by amending Sections 3B and 8W, and to declare an emergency. This, again, allows us to make changes related to the Management Compensation Plan for our Division of Fire. This will be effective with the pay period that includes April 1st, 2013. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0709-2013, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a contract with the Community Crime Patrol, Inc., to provide citizen patrollers to assist the Division of Police in the control and prevention of crime in the Ohio State University District, Wyland Park, Hilltop, Franklinton, Marion Village area, Downtown Park District, and the North London area, to authorize and direct the transfer of $463,000 within a General Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $763,000 from a General Fund, and to declare an emergency. Neighborhoods patrolled that listed before will be through this ordinance, and the duration of this agreement will be March 1st, 2013 through February 28th, 2014. Community Crime Patrol is additionally funded by the Ohio State University as well as United Way of Central Ohio. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0749-2013, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to modify and extend the UTC type contract FL004338 for the option to purchase police uniforms, accessories, and associated services with Roy Taylor's Uniform Company of Columbus, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes and declare an emergency. To give some additional information related to this, the original contract was established in May 2009 based on a competitive bid process. This contract will expire on March 31st, 2013 with no options available to extend. However, during this time, the purchasing office is requesting that the continuation of this contract will allow them to continue to make additional new specifications to go through the formal bid process, and this will take some time. And we are excited to see the savings that could potentially result through this, and again, looking forward to seeing the changes that are made to best prepare our police to performing their jobs and duties. As such, this ordinance is requesting waiving of competitive bidding to, as the current contract has no provisions to extend beyond 33113. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 0767-2013, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract for the purchase of replacement conducted electrical weapons, CEW cartridges, and CEW holsters with Vance Outdoors for the Division of Police, to authorize an appropriation in the Safety Initiative Funds, to authorize the expenditure of $199,862.13 from the Safety Initiative Fund, to waive the provision of competitive bidding and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Safety and Division of Police needs to establish this contract for the purchase or replacement of CEWs, otherwise known as TASERS, the ancillary supplies and warranties, because a significant portion of the current 435 CEWs used by police are either out of certification or soon will be. The last major purchase of CEWs in the Division of Police was in 2004. Again, TASER International has stated the only authorized deal in Ohio is Vance's Outdoors, therefore, the ordinance requests a waiver of competitive bidding. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have this evening in Public Safety and Judiciary.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. And Public Service and Transportation, this evening, we have ordinance 0478-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Service to establish a purchase order with the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio for landfill use by the Division of Planning and Operations, and to authorize the expenditure of $225,000 or so much thereof as may be needed from the Street Construction, Maintenance, and Repair Fund, to waive the formal competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for a voice vote.
Craig? Klein? Miller? Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginther.
Next, we have ordinance 0669-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into various agreements with the City of Gehanna for the roadway improvement Stigler Road project, to accept an initial deposit from Gehanna, execute agreement modifications to accept additional deposits as necessary, and return any unused balance to Gehanna upon the completion of the construction, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance will allow the Director of Public Service to enter into various agreements with the City of Gehanna for the project to improve Stigler Road. This project is to be built and completed this year thanks to a partnership between the cities of Columbus and Gehanna. The project will run south from the intersection of Stigler Road and Wendler Boulevard in Columbus to more than 600 feet within Gehanna. The project will include sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and make the roadway safer for pedestrians traveling on Stigler between Wendler and just inside the City of Gehanna. And finally, the project will add a retaining wall along Stigler on the west side of the street. The Columbus Department of Public Service will administer the construction of this project. Because the sidewalk will extend into Gehanna, the City of Gehanna will pay to help cover the project's construction and inspection costs. Both the City of Columbus and the City of Gehanna are working together to make this stretch of Stigler Road safer for motorists, pedestrians, and bicyclists. I would like to thank Director Kelsey and his team for their leadership on this project. I urge your support on this ordinance. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all we have in Public Service and Transportation this evening. May I move on to Public Utilities?
Please.
Thank you. In Public Utilities, we have ordinance 0685-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with U.S. Utility Contractor Company for the Broad Meadows Overhead Streetlight Project for the Division of Power, and to authorize the expenditure of $70,916.35 within the Electricity Primary Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance allows the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract for Broad Meadows Overhead Streetlight Project. The project consists of the installation of street lighting beginning at High Street and proceeding west. The street will be receiving overhead lighting poles with 100-watt, 480-volt luminaries. Construction for this project is scheduled to begin early this summer and be completed by December of this year. for Broad Meadows overhead streetlight project. The project consists of the installation of street lighting beginning at High Street and proceeding west. The street will be receiving overhead lighting poles with 100-watt, 480-volt luminaries. Construction for this project is scheduled to begin early this summer and be completed by December of this year. The project represents administration and council's efforts to help light the City of Columbus. I would like to thank Director Davies and his team for their leadership on this project. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
That's all I have in Utilities this evening. Thank you, President Ginter.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Is there anything else to come before council this evening? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Clerk Call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
We stand in adjournment. We have four non-agenda speakers that we will take momentarily.